It is 7:20. We will reconvene, this regular meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We've been in closed session under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.074, and no action was taken. Welcome. As we say every month, we appreciate your continued support and interest in the Waco Public Schools. And as I tell folks every month, I would like to remind you that this regular business meeting of the Waco Independent School District Board of Trustees is set for the purpose of setting goals, listening to reports of the superintendent, approving budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. As management, it's the sole responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device, if you will either turn it off or put it on silent at this time, we would appreciate it. I'd let you know that every action taken tonight has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. And once again, welcome to anybody watching at home on Channel 17, and welcome to all of you here with us tonight. And with that, we'd ask that you join us as we pause for a moment of silence for prayer, contemplation, meditation, and/or reflection. And we will move on to Item 6, Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Kane?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're pleased to have two students from Kendrick Elementary School to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please welcome fifth graders, second grader Marissa Jimenez and fifth grader Marcus Jimenez. Ms. Tanya Coleman is the principal.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students. Very good job. Board members, please join me in front of the dais for tonight's special recognition.
To begin the special recognition portion of our meeting, we'd like to express appreciation to our pledge of allegiance leaders who are both from Kendrick Elementary and who also happen to be brother and sister. Marissa Jimenez is a second grader who loves math and plays catcher for Glory, her softball team. She is also a cheerleader for her brother's football team. At school, she was a role model to her peers. Her teacher, Ms. Ellis, said the whole class can look to Marissa as a role model. When she grows up, Marissa wants to help her brother Marcus on a farm. Marcus Jimenez is a fifth grader, and he is Marissa's older brother. His favorite subject is also math. At school, he is a member of the Kendrick Leadership Team. In his spare time, he enjoys playing baseball and kickball. And if you haven't already guessed, Marcus wants to be a farmer when he grows up. Marcus's teacher said that he is one of the hardest-working students in the class. He strives to help others around him, and he is always looking for ways to help, not only himself, but also the classroom community. We want to recognize the parents of Marissa and Marcus who are here with us tonight, Mother Rachel Monreal and Father Miguel Jimenez. Thank you for sharing your children with us tonight. You must be very proud of both of them. We also want to say thank you to our adopted school partner, Barnes &amp; Noble Booksellers, for donating the books that our pledge leaders are receiving. It always brings pleasure to share good news about employees, especially when they have earned statewide recognition for the work they do in our schools and with our students. Ebony Stewart, career counselor for the Greater Waco Advanced Academies, was named the High School Counselor of the Year by the Texas School Counselor Association, which also honored her with the Rosine Fleming Memorial Award at the statewide awards luncheon in Dallas earlier this month. Ms. Stewart began her career in education teaching science at the same middle school where she attended as a student. That experience inspired her to pursue a master's degree in school counseling and later earned her LPC. Ms. Stewart is a member of the Heart of Texas Counseling Association and was recently chosen to serve as Senator of that organization. Tonight, we're pleased to welcome representatives from the local counseling chapter that nominated Ebony for this award. Shelley Rogers Sherr, Ms. Sherr? Oh, sorry, there's a wall here. Sharon R. Cunningham, Awards Chair. I mean, Ms. Sherr was president, is president. And Sharon Heatherington, our very own Sharon Heatherington, who used to work with us, is the Awards Committee member. Thank you, all three of you, for nominating Ms. Ebony Stewart for this prestigious statewide award and for recognizing the compassion, patience, flexibility, commitment, and attention to detail that she demonstrates every day. Ebony, congratulations on your achievement. Thank you for sharing your passion and talent with our students. And we know that your husband, James Stewart, who is an assistant principal at Waco High, must also be very proud. And James is with us tonight, yes. Very good.
All right, we'll move on to Item 7, Audience for Guests. No one signed up, correct, Sandra? So we'll move on to the consent agenda. I don't think I've been asked to pull anything. Does anyone need anything pulled from the consent agenda? All right, then I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Thank you, Ms. Perez. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cordewag. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item 9, Discussion and Possible Action, Gifts and Grants. Dr. Kane?
Thank you, Mr. President. J.H. Hines Elementary School received a general campus donation from their adopted school partner, Sanderson Farms, in the amount of $2,500. This is an increase of $7,335 in total cash items and services donated to Waco ISD, which was recorded for November 2016. As regard to grants, the Texas Department of Agriculture has awarded Child Nutrition Services a National School Lunch Program grant for West Avenue Elementary in the amount of $29,634. The grant funds will purchase three pieces of serving line equipment in an effort to improve the overall efficiency of school food service operations. This is an increase of grant awards totaling $29,634 for Waco ISD, and I am recommending that the Board accepts these gifts and grants.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. I'll entertain a motion on the gifts and grants.
Mr. President, I know that we accept the recommendation of the administration to accept these gifts and grants.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pue. Any questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item 10, Reports and Discussion, Monthly Financial Reports. Ms. Davis?
There's really not a lot to report this month. I mean, still early in the year. Based on first six weeks, it looks like our revenues or state revenues are a little under what we projected, but not by a lot, maybe 100,000 or so. Our tax collections are up, as you'll see in your report. And I think that's a do... They are actually more in line with what we normally see this time of year. Last year, if you recall, I think with the TRE, they were lagging behind where they normally did. So, other than that, there's not really much to report. Looks very consistent with what we normally see.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Any questions on the financial report? All right, then we'll move on to Item 10B, which was the Continuous Improvement Governance Training that we went to last weekend with TEA. Dr. Kane?
Yes, it was a real pleasure to be there. I know to say, we went on Saturday and Sunday after everyone worked all week and went to a meeting from 9:00 to 6:00, and I mean, from 9:00 to 6:00. And to say that it was really a transforming experience. It was well organized. The leader, the conference leader, was just Mr... Deputy Commissioner A.J. Crable was just the best equipped, made such a presentation, and made certain that we believed that there is a way that this school district can be better by actually his mantra, which is nothing will change in school districts. Students don't change until adult behaviors change. What did he say?
You were there for 20 more.
Oh, tell him, I forgot. I got the sense of it, though. But it really was, because at first, it's like, okay, that sounds good. You know, that sounds good. But in effect, he made believers. I mean, we had four assistant superintendents there, Dr. McDermott, Mr. Hartley, Ms. Ellis, and Ms. Williams, and seven board members and me. There was also a board member from another district, and then there were some trainer of... Some people who are training, trainers of trainers. It was also a trainer of trainers model. And he didn't mince words. And so, the Board at the end and the administrative team made a commitment that we wanted to be a part of this process. So, I appreciate Ms. Teckel had kind of sketched out a calendar that would be a good starting place. I suggest we have a facilitators, just because no matter how enthused you are, having a facilitator helps you stay on track. So, I would like to talk about... No, don't necessarily have to make decisions.
Well, okay. So, the purpose of the agenda item, as Dr. Kane said, you know, we... As everyone knows, we've got some homework to do now over the next 19 months to comply with the timeline and to have things in place to where we are getting at least a 90% score by June of 2018. And so, I want to get into sort of the logistics of what that'll look like. You know, as he indicated, sort of that first index of Vision 1 sort of logically comes first in terms of agreeing upon and adopting a vision for this community and then looking at student outcome goals. And so, we want to talk about how to do that. Before we get into that, does anybody else have any other comments they want to make about the weekend? I mean, you summarized it very well. I don't have anything to add. I don't know if anybody else wanted to... We had plenty of time to reflect and share during the weekend.
It's kind of hard to express how transforming it was, but it was... It was. It's a whole new way of Board administrative operating to change a system and move it into a real turnaround mode.
Suggestively. I mean, it is... It was very clearly presented as a new continuous improvement framework for governance focused solely on student outcomes, and it was well done. You're welcome to comment.
Yeah, just... And again, it's like has been said, it was an opportunity to really focus on some information that will enable us to change the discussion and change perhaps the focus, and certainly point towards expectations regarding student outcomes. And in that regard, it was a very rewarding two days, a long period of time, but it was constantly reinforced with new information that we can utilize going forward and absolutely focused on student outcomes. And I guess, from a Board standpoint, ensuring or reaffirming the fact that that needs to be an important part of the ongoing dialogue in a majority of the discussions that we have, so.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. In terms of what we want to accomplish tonight, I don't think anybody brought their booklet. If you look on page 13, there is a timeline of what we're supposed to do. This last quarter of 2016, October, November, December, is what is identified as sort of the baseline quarter.
Oh, there it is. Here, would you send that back down?
So, what we've been asked to do and to be able to submit by January 27th is sort of our baseline analysis. And then, again, we've got quarterly reports due for the next six quarters thereafter. You should each have sort of a possible calendar for governance work that Ms. Teckel submitted to Dr. Kane and me earlier this week as a starting point. And, you know, it's... We all know there's a lot of work to do. I think Angela's given some thought to how to get this done in a timely and efficient manner. I did not spend a lot of time looking at it, and I know the other five of you are seeing it for the first time this evening. But I thought it was... And Dr. Kane agreed, this is really a great starting point for the discussion of what this calendar's going to look like. Angela, do you want to kind of explain what you've proposed?
Well, sure.
You want to pull the mic towards you?
Okay. So, I thought, where could we reasonably be by April 28th? I noticed I had 27th in here, but actually, the date's April the 28th. And we did have that activity where we all looked at how many points we had now and how many points we thought we would have by the end of April. And so, that's actually my partner. We thought this is where we could be. I was working with Yolanda, but thinking we could reasonably be by the end of April where we could have more than... Or close to half of the total points. But what it requires is us taking a look at our existing vision, establishing some student outcome goals and constraints. But then, in order to get the maximum amount of points, you have to propose that draft to your teachers, your community, to your teachers, your students, families. And so, I thought, well, so you've got to come up with a first draft that you're pretty comfortable with, that you can submit to your different groups and get feedback on, which is going to take some time. And then, we're going to have to meet and talk about what... We're going to have to listen to what the feedback was to what we'd propose and probably tweak it. And so, we can't even begin to draft progress measures to our goals until we agree on our goal. So, when I sat down and tried to map it out, I realized there...
You have to plan backwards.
You have to... Right. You have to plan backwards, and you have to plan each step so that you get community input before you get so far down the road that you've got to go back because your community doesn't even buy in, let's say, to the vision. So, my thinking was to do the preliminary work, which I think's going to be the hardest work, to get the first draft for us even to present to our community for feedback. And so, I had proposed... I just took our Thursdays, because we seem to already have those set aside as it is. And you can see, proposed to get first draft by the end of January that then we could take out to our community for a month in January and February, and then come back before spring break and take a look at that feedback, make the changes we need to make. And then, after spring break, come back and draft the final review, which again, we'll want to give an opportunity to the public to comment before we adopt.
All right.
So, it's kind of some...
I'm sorry.
Several drafts in there.
So, we start with the December to January timeline?
Starting December 8th. I like the beginning and ending times. That does kind of keep it...
Well, that's for me.
So, the...
The ending time is for me, the 8:30. It's a suggestion to...
Well, but I think that...
...you guys that stay all night.
So, if we go... The hope would be then, the week after Thanksgiving, we would meet and finish a calendar that we're all comfortable with, discuss the groups for the community feedback to get the mastering focus points, and then complete the initial draft of the visions and goals. Would that include the goal process measures?
No, because you can't do those until you have your goal. So, you can't adopt progress measures until you get your goal, and you can't...
But see where we adopt constraints at step four. Where did we do the process measures?
So, the progress measures aren't until after you've had community feedback on what your goals are. Because my worry was, if we went ahead and adopted goals and progressed to our progress measures, and then our folks didn't even agree with our goals...
Initial goals.
Then we were going to have to back up and undo some work.
Okay.
But I am certainly open to...
No, I think that... I mean, we want meaningful community participation, and I think getting too far down and ahead of the community makes... Is a legitimate concern. Mr. Pue, were you going to say something?
Yeah, well...
Kind of like what I want to say.
The community involvement part, I guess I'm having a hard time. And I know I was there for the whole seminar, and I'm probably...
You know, I didn't hear that piece. You didn't talk about... When you look at the matrix...
I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I get it, but when you're... It's just, this is going to be difficult as it is. And I don't want to do anything, obviously, that the community's against. I think we do need to present it. I'm not looking, I think, you know, for a community-wide brainstorming session.
Okay, but here's the... You can't get the points without...
Right. The... When you look at the... What we're talking about is...
Then it's required, and I'm on board. I don't have any...
When you look at the scoring metric that we looked at, you can get those first four...
I think that's in the book.
Well, the last exercise, we all kind of estimated how many points we would have at the end of January...
Right.
And where we wanted to be at the end of April. And when you look at that metric, what Angela's saying is, you can get the first four columns with well-stated goals and, you know, using the SMART acronym.
Right.
And you can get up to Beginning Focus, Approaching Focus, and Meeting Focus, which gets you to this fourth column. To get the maximum points, which is mastering focus, just about every one of the different indexes says, students, families, teachers, community members were involved in the development process in such a way, there's broad community acceptance. And so, if we're going to...
We didn't get past the first three columns.
Okay.
We were less ambitious, is that fair?
And so, if, you know, if the ultimate goal is to implement the framework with fidelity and get the maximum number of points... And you're right, he didn't really talk about that last column. But when we do our self-assessment each quarter, if we're going to get out to that fifth column, just about every component requires fairly significant community involvement. And so, that's where she's wrestling with trying to get down to knocking off Vision 1, 2, and 3 as indexes, but at the same time, making sure we've got this community engagement piece.
We're not going to make an A.
No.
This is amazing television discussion.
No, I know. And we talked about, this is not must-see TV. This is kind of out in the weeds a little bit. But that's... If you're going to get to that level of mastering focus, it does require a great deal of community engagement and involvement at each step. And we do need to build that into this calendar.
And for the record, I'm not against that.
I know you're not. You love the community as much as we all.
And we have so many groups already set up. I mean, we've got such great response with our transformation community. We've got responses for other times that we've gone in the community. So, I don't think it'll be a great stretch.
It's just, she's right. Logistically, when you look at it, you would like to be able to put your goals together and your goal progress measures that we're discussing. But you do run the risk of putting together progress measures on goals that the community says that's really not what... Aren't their goals. And you're right, there's a number of things we've done in terms of holding public forums on the strategic plan, meetings we had on the TRE. I mean, there's been a lot of... Some community input already that we can probably go back and look at. But I do think we need to engage the community specifically in this project.
And that would be a detail we would need is, I think, one of the first decisions, how are we going to do that? So, because that usually takes longer, and we need to advertise a lot, and...
Well, let's talk about this. If you look at the second section of possible dates, the first date is December 8th, to meet at 6:00, to try to knock out Items 1, 2, and 3 on the list above, which would mean establishing a calendar, and this, I think, is a great starting point, and then discussing focus groups or other format that will allow us to get that community engagement.
Yeah, that would be the how.
And then, beginning to first draft of visions, the vision and goals, with the understanding that that Item 3 actually gets carried forward into the next meeting in January, the way she's got that set up. Is everybody comfortable with taking this home, looking at it, and at the very least, committing tonight that we'll come back December 8th, finalize the calendar, everybody will be prepared to discuss the best format for getting that community engagement, and will be ready to start talking about the initial draft of the goals?
And it would be a single-item agenda.
Yes, that would be all that's on the agenda that night.
So, it's really going to be a workshop that we'd kind of just set up in the middle of the room?
Everybody okay with that piece?
Yes.
Okay. We'll take the calendar and look at it, and be prepared to provide feedback on December 8th. Here's the next piece we need to talk about. I think when we get into goal-setting, I think the consensus has been, and I think Deputy Commissioner Crable recommended, that that be a facilitated meeting, meaning, obviously, we have somebody help lead us through that process. There have been a number, you know, just individually, that evening, a number of you shared different thoughts on that. And that was before I got this calendar and the email. But, you know, Alan, I think you wanted somebody who was familiar with this framework, the TEA framework. Carrie, I think your thought was, maybe based on a conversation you had, that Deputy Commissioner Crable may be willing to provide that level of engagement. I remember him saying...
Here's his answer.
He would review it.
He seems to offer himself an out based on scheduling, but he appears to be willing.
Okay.
He is willing.
Would everybody agree, based on our experience last weekend, that if we agree on this calendar and he can help be there, he would be our first choice to help us through this process? Okay.
So, I just need to... So, I will check with him on December 8th tomorrow.
And...
And if he... But if he is on that... Isn't that one of the dates that was...
Well, let's say this. If he's not available on the 8th, find out the dates he is available, those first two weeks of December. I mean, I don't think this is set in stone. His calendar's what's set in stone. And we'll walk around his calendar, because we'd like to continue to interact with him. And if, for some reason, the calendars just won't work, Dr. Kane has talked to someone at Region 12...
One of the trainers who were there.
Who was in the back of the room and was kind of participating in the training of the trainer part. And I guess that would be a fallback, but let's check on Deputy Commissioner Crable first.
I also could check in case one meeting, he could come later in the month, we could do what we've done before and move our regular and workshop around, so we could have that meeting then.
That'd be fun. I mean, I think we...
I agree.
We're flexible, and I think it's...
Okay, I agree.
He is a powerful enough facilitator that if we can work into his schedule and get him back, I think everybody in this group has a great deal of respect. Since he developed the framework, he's... It's like going straight to the source would be great if he will help us do that. All right. Is there anything else, then, that we need to do tonight on the governance training?
No. I think that's a good plan, and I appreciate Ms. Teckel's time to come up with that ruling schedule.
Very good. All right. Well, we'll get December 8th on everybody's calendar if Deputy Commissioner Crable's available. If there are other dates that he is, if that date doesn't work, why don't you just email that, and we'll get that...
I'm going to rank order in December in my preference, you know. And if he could come to any of the ones in December, I would think we could rework our schedule.
I will know, just from the invite you had for the event on the 7th, I'm actually going to be out on another event on the 8th.
Right.
7th, 8th, and 9th. But we'll figure it out.
Yeah. But we also... There is the first.
Were you just trying to give us a week off?
I was just getting the...
She was putting the dates on the...
So, with the Board, if the first was an option rather than the 8th, okay. So, any first.
I think we're flexible to find out what works on his calendar. I think that's the guidance. All right. Anything else?
Not on that, sir.
My mic gets frozen up. I'm going to... I gotta make this work. I'm going to, I gotta make this work. Then we're ready to item 11 announcements.
Oh, that's right. December 1st is our outstanding picture. That's why I used to get back. Mr. Giedson.
Congratulations are in order for one of our own. As you may have noticed, Norman Manning isn't with us tonight because he's being honored by the Centex African American Chamber of Commerce as their Public Servant of the Year, and of course, we certainly agree with their choice for that award. The holidays are upon us. Tomorrow's the last day of classes before the Thanksgiving break. It will be an early release day, and then, the district is closed all of Thanksgiving week. State Board of Education tomorrow will recognize our 2016 National History Day winner, Harper Hoover, at their November meeting tomorrow morning down in Austin, so we're certainly proud of her. And the theatrical performances of The Little Mermaid at Waco High School closed this weekend, but they have added a Sunday matinee performance because of popular demand. And this is being called a Name Your Price performance, showing no fixed-price tickets, just whatever donation you think is appropriate for a ticket to see that performance. If you haven't caught The Little Mermaid yet, it is certainly an excellent show. And University High's Theater Group is also on stage this weekend. They're presenting The House of Blue Leaves, and their final show for those performers is Saturday night. 11th Annual Central Texas Turkey Trot is this Saturday morning at the Bransus Park East. It's the Altrusa Club's host of that event, which includes a 5K run, a 10K run, and for some of us, we walk, and that. Proceeds, once again, will go to The Cove this year. So far, as of yesterday, they had 212 runners registered. That is more than twice the total they had last year, so expecting a great turnout. So, come on out Saturday morning for that. Waco ISD Education Foundation has asked teachers to start thinking about their grant applications for this year. Letter of Intent forms are now available. And our annual Teacher of the Year Award Ceremony's coming up December 1st at University High's Performing Arts Center. The Waco ISD Cares Giving Campaign will run from November 14th to December 7th, so it is underway now. Employees able to go online and choose up to three community nonprofit groups that they can donate to next year, either by a one-time check or by their payroll deductions. And then, it's never too early to start thinking about a career path. For the first time ever, Waco ISD is hosting a middle school career fair. That will be December 7th at the Waco Convention Center. We will have 1,200 8th graders descending upon that building in shifts. Don't want to freak out the employees at the convention center, but they'll be coming one middle school at a time for about an hour and a half each, and we have more than 80 vendors participating in that to help. And the vendors are excited about the chance to start reaching out to those kids at the 8th grade level. Looking for a new head football coach at University High, Keith Willis resigned today from that position after four years leading the Trojans. He is a first-class individual. We are not going to let him go too far. He'll be at Carver Middle School next semester, helping our young people as a behavioral specialist. And then, one last reminder, it's going to be a little chilly this weekend, going to get down close to freezing, make you start thinking about winter, and that means the Winter Carnival for Cesar Chavez Middle School. Put that on your calendars for December 15th. Hope all of you have a wonderful Thanksgiving. If you're traveling, travel safe.
Thank you, Mr. Giedson. Dr. Kane?
In January of 2011, I first interviewed with the Board of Trustees of the Waco Independent School District. On that board were Mr. Alex Williams, who had served so long on the board, David Schleicher, Pat Atkins, Angela Teakell, Mr. Larry Perez, Norman Manning, and Alan Sykes. Since then, I have served under three hundred other board members, Colbert Murphy, Mr. Kerry Dupuy, and Ms. Stephanie Cordewig. It has been a pleasure to work with these community leaders as they put in countless hours for absolutely no pay. That original board charged me with the responsibility of ensuring that Waco ISD was focused on instruction and student performance so that every student graduating would either be college-ready or workforce-ready. I did not take that charge lightly, and that is what the Waco ISD leadership team has worked hard to accomplish since I came here in 2011. In that time, public schools in Texas have gone from being measured by the tax test to the much more rigorous STAR and EOC exams. State standards have raised each year. Our students benefited from those higher expectations. Waco ISD has consistently improved student performance while at the same time, society and social conditions increased demands on public schools, demands far beyond instructional responsibilities. The board and district administration were charged with ensuring a better future for Waco ISD students, and we gladly embrace those demands. I consider myself fortunate to have been part of a school district that increasingly meets the challenges of working with high percentage of families facing daily the crushing effects of poverty. Waco ISD must always work with, advocate for, and enthusiastically educate its students accordingly, knowing from the start how difficult preparing students for an unknown future can be. These past six years have been a wonderful professional and personal growth experience for me. I stand before you tonight to say thank you. Thank you for your trust, for your support, and for working beside me through the good times and the bad times, for being a board not afraid to make difficult decisions, and for you being a board focused on student instruction and on students. I have been thinking about this since March, and more so in the last few months, but before attaching a timeline to my decision, I wanted to steer the district through the very difficult and complex University High investigation that is now close to being completed. In a few short months, I will turn 66 years old. I have had the pleasure of serving in a variety of capacities as an educator, and am grateful for that 40 years that I was able to practice a profession that I truly love. Even so, I have decided to retire at the end of this school year and begin the next chapter in my life. Making the announcement now gives the board ample time to conduct a thorough search and find the best candidate to be the next superintendent. Again, I thank you. It has been a privilege and an honor to serve this community, and I am confident that Waco ISD has nothing but a bright and successful days ahead, but bright and successful days ahead of it. Please know that there will always be a special place in my heart for you and for Waco ISD.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. You know, you and I first had this discussion in March. So, I've had almost eight months to prepare for you to read that speech, and I'm not ready to hear it. This is not the same district that it was six years ago when you came here. You can look at the partnerships with the business community in implementing Guam and the Healthcare Academy, Guaca. You heard requests from board members and parents that we needed to do more to address the needs of our gifted and talented students, and immediately went to work on implementing the Atlas Academy, which is the most dynamic gift and talented program in all of central Texas. You have, just from my family's experience, helped change the lives of young people through bringing the idea of the High School Musical back to this community where our students are performing at levels that I don't think anybody believed were imaginable. And even little things, just the sense of collaboration that you've helped bring to this community. And, you know, and we all know about the big things like Prosper Waco, but even little things that we don't talk about, the partnership with Baylor this year in the School of Social Work, in the School of Education, and your willingness, when community members had questions, to understand this was important enough to address those questions, but we needed this program. The Cove and, and all the partners who've come together to address the needs of our homeless students. And I think I have, I know I have talked to you as much as anyone in this community over the last six years, and I've always enjoyed our interactions, and I just want to say thank you.
Well, it's been a pleasure. It really is, and I appreciate you saying all those names, but I was a small part of each one of those.
And let me say one other thing, just so it's perfectly clear. June doesn't run around, come around for like seven or eight more months. I mean, you, you are not coasting now. And, and we have talked about the incredible amount of energy and tireless effort you have brought to this district. I know you're going to continue to do that.
Oh, I'm sure I'll be walking out giving orders.
So, this is not, I mean, we've got to let folks know, we're going to begin the process of looking for the next superintendent, but you're not gone yet.
That's true.
And you're here, and we're going to continue to demand great things from you.
But I really, I really felt like it was so important because it can be a seamless transition, and my greatest hope is that this next person will take this district to the next level.
You have laid the foundation for them to do so. Anybody else? You will have other opportunities. I'm sure there will be many events.
I have a full commentary until June.
You can comment now and again.
I have a month you can say this. I'm okay.
Yeah. I will say, there will be many more opportunities, and I think, Pat, you've encapsulated those positives and pros very well. Long list of items that have not only been very, very challenging to initiate, but it took a lot of collaboration, a lot of work on your part, and, you know, congratulations for that. All those pieces that you put together that will have long-lasting impact for the district and the students of the district. So, we can, we've got many opportunities to talk more about those accolades, but I, I think you built a, a strong foundation. We'll miss you.
Thank you. I'll miss you, too.
And I think that the items that Pat covered in great detail will, will, will continue to have your impact on them for many years to come.
Thank you.
So, but more to follow. We'll have other opportunities.
More to follow.
Now that Mr. Teakell has given us such a rigorous schedule.
Yeah. We're going to be meeting every other Thursday. You'll have lots of time to, opportunity to say anything.
I had that planned.
Anybody else have anything you want to say this evening? All right.
You know, Pat, I'll say one thing.
You can pull the mic towards you and say. That's all right.
Norm is not here to tell you that, so.
We don't always agree, and as a consequence of that, I've earned, you have earned, and me, a healthy respect for your fighting ability. You approach things with, I, I think I referred to you in a newspaper article once as Patton in a skirt.
Yep, you did. My friends and my parents.
You probably, you probably, you probably remember that. Your grit and determination backed up by hard work I haven't seen in very many other human beings.
Thank you. I had the same type of parents you had.
I do. Again, we don't always agree, but we have maintained a healthy respect for each other.
I could not miss you more.
And I appreciate your position on that, and I've, I genuinely admire you. And thanks for your service to this community. You've done some things, specifically Guam and Guaca, that, you know, I'm not sure they happened without you, and you were here. And thank you. And the, the community owes you a debt of gratitude there.
Well, it's been a pleasure living in this community. This is a community, I mean, it, and I've lived in a lot of communities, but this is a community that just absolutely, when there is a, a need or a good goal, I mean, it is, let's get on board. You don't have to, it's a, it's a.
Folks love the schools.
It's kind of like Prosper Waco. Once we got focused, so, thank you, and yes, I will be here.
This is, again, to clarify, this is not a victory lap. You are, you are expected to continue these Herculean efforts for at least seven more months.
Glad you mentioned the victory lap because I want to make one other kind of summation comment, and that is that many people in this room know, and the board appreciates, Bonnie is 24/7.
And will be.
And if you're going to keep up with Bonnie, you better have your track shoes on, so.
We've got a lot of other things to accomplish before we go. We've got a long list.
We got a list.
I'm going to do all the winces. Angela has all the others.
All right. Any other announcements? All right. Hearing no objection, and we're adjourned.